August fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, meeting of the Surrey County Board of Commissioners to order. At this time, I'll ask Commissioner Van Tucker to offer the invocation and pledge allegiance.
Let's pray. Gracious heavenly Father, we want to thank you for this day and all your blessings in it. For your many mercies and the wonderful abundance of grace you've shone upon us. We ask the Lord at the same time that you bless those around us, our county and our state and our world. Seems at times upside down, and we pray, Lord, that your grace and your mercy would extend to those folks in suffering and grieving and pain and war. And hurt, and Lord, we ask that you watch over us and watch over me in this meeting. And Lord, help all we do be in your will, give us grace, wisdom. And courage to say what we believe and do what we think is right. Give us discernment that we would follow your will and that all we do be pleased with you. For it's in Jesus' name, our Lord and risen Savior, I pray. Amen.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Looking for approval of this evening's agenda. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Marion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Harris. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I have approval of the July eighteenth, twenty-two, meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Tucker. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Ayes have. For our consent agenda, I'll have our county manager Kristinoff to go over those bullet points.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item is to require a request on the tax administrator to schedule tax foreclosures. Also from the tax administrator to twenty-one, twenty-two annual settlement. Also from the tax administrator write-off request for two thousand twelve taxes. Also a new credit card company information and approval request from tax office as well, as well as their end-of-month summaries, charges, and reports. Question to sheriff's office to retire badges and weapons of retired employees. Streamflow rehabilitation program contract approval from the soil and water board. A request from finance to accept state budget-directed funds from Partners Health Management. This is for the substance abuse recovery program. Information and a request from me concerning the Dobson Planning Services interlocal agreement. Workers' compensation settlement activity from HR. Also request from facilities to approve sale of the Elkin Center sign and its location to the North Carolina Department of Transportation for a pending road project. And finally, there's one add-on item you have before you. It's also from facilities, and it's basically a board approval of an emergency request that I approved to replace the chiller which went out at the sheriff's office. And that is the consent agenda.
Motion to approve consent agenda, as read.
Motion by Commissioner Marion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Harris. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Ayes have it. This time, we have a special recognition of Eagle Scouts.
This is a certificate of recognition from the county of Surrey for Micah Vaughn, troop six fifty-one. Welcome, Surrey County Board of Commissioners. This is hereby presented to Micah Vaughn, a certificate of recognition as an expression of the board's admiration and appreciation of his attainment of Eagle Scout rank and the Boy Scouts of America in two thousand twenty-one and for bringing honor not only to himself, his troop, and his family, but to the youth and all citizens of Surrey County this thirteenth day of August, two thousand twenty-two, by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Bill Goins' chair, Eddie Harris Fies' chair, Larry Johnson, Mark Marion, and Van Tucker. Congratulations, Mr. Vaughn, sir.
I don't have a speech prepared, but my project was to design and build two little free food pantries and put them up around my community, one at the fire station and another at a local church. Having completed them and put them up, they have seen quite a bit of use over the past few months they've been up. So I'm very happy to see that they're being put to use by the community to help those less fortunate and who could need food.
At this time, we'll have our open forum, which we give citizens three minutes. We just ask the citizens to come up and state their name and their phone number, and we just ask you to keep your comments to three minutes. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Terrell Stevens, seven eight nine two five six one. Mr. Commissioners, gentlemen, patriots, and others who are here. Of course, we're very disappointed at the moment that we haven't taken action on the stolen elections of two thousand twenty. But we do have some requests going forward. First of all, one of the obvious ways that fraudulent votes were brought forward, you can see in the movie Two Thousand Mules by Dinesh D'Souza, and that's the mail-in voting. And as you know, the Board of Election, or you should know, Board of Election does not allow comparison of signatures. In fact, you can't even check mail-in votes to see if there are in fact signatures on the mail-in ballots. So that is an obvious weakness in our system. That could be addressed by you gentlemen here if you cared to. Secondly, though, another way that votes are stolen are that on our electronic poll books. On the electronic poll books, that real-time data is sent forth and intercepted by bad actors. And these bad actors use that in early voting to determine who to attribute the fake votes to. So we would encourage everyone to vote only on election day, to not vote early and to not use mail-in voting. And there'll be a much less chance that you'll show up on election day and say, oh, I'm sorry, you have already voted. And if you do, that should be a felony investigation, but none has occurred, even though that's happened numerous times in North Carolina in the last election cycle. Lastly, stealing occurs in the black boats, black boxes, the tabulators themselves. These very mysterious black boxes, which are really adding machines, they count dots on a piece of paper, have three million lines of code on them, and you're not allowed to look into them because if you do, you'll spoil these very significant machines. They are so sophisticated. My God, we can't trust citizens and commissioners to look into them because you will destroy the value of these things. And you might expose their proprietary software. Except all three companies that are approved for use in North Carolina use the exact same software. So it's kind of a, it's kind of a red herring. Anyway, I still have some faith in you guys. I hope that you show courage and come forth and take action on what has occurred. And you can go to paper poll books, which would, in one way, to cheat. And you can require hand-to-eye counting of ballots, which would stop another way of cheating. And you may not be able to solve everything, but you could solve it here in Surrey County.
Hey, Rachel Collins, nine seven one four eight six nine. I wanted to come before you again and passionately request that you all consider reinstating service to our county and town through the Park Bus Route Six. I will not reiterate my statements from the April or June meeting, but I firmly believe it is an asset to our local communities. Pilot Mountain and Mount Airy have passed resolutions in support of Park. I have copies of those if you would like to have them for your records. Park was created to provide transportation at a low cost to visitors and residents of the Piedmont area. Many residents and visitors to the town of Pilot Mountain and Mount Airy have used this public transportation. We believe it is an important government service as it ensures that all people have a way to seek the best medical care and employment opportunities available and reduces the number of vehicles and pollution on the road. My greatest disappointment, other than the board's quick termination of this agreement, is the lack of communication to our county residents from the board on numerous times that I and others have reached out to you all for response on this issue. I lastly reached out on August eighth, excuse me, on July eighteenth and reminded you all that the tax on rental cars was still intact. I received no response. So now the tax stands, and we don't have the Park Bus service. It also has come to my attention that a letter was sent on behalf of the county to Park on the nineteenth requesting information about this tax. Coincidence, maybe. In that letter to Park, and I quote, "The Surrey County Board of Commissioners feels strongly about this matter and will do whatever is required to end this unpopular tax." I will remind those listening that this tax is only on cars rented in the county and no other source. The vast majority of the taxpayers in the county do not rent cars. These rentals are mostly from visitors and insurance companies. I would argue that other than the people in this room and on the elected boards in Mount Airy and Pilot Mountain, only a handful of people would have even heard of this tax. When you are in local government, you should vote for the greater good of your constituents. It shouldn't matter if you are Republican or Democrat. You should vote for what is best for your communities. Because of this board's vote, we lost out on an expansion of Bus Route Six and lost out to funds of approximately three hundred thousand dollars to Randolph County. You have heard the citizens of the county with your vote, but the good news is you have the power to reinstate this. You have the power to gain back the voter's trust, and you have the power to do the right thing. Thank you for your time.
My name is Tim Chordrus, number six five five nine nine six zero. I'm going to speak on behalf of the Park Bus. I rode the Park Bus. I was in management for a Fortune five hundred company for over thirty-eight years. And I rode the Park Bus. We helped get it started. And what happened? Nurses started riding it, dental hygienists started riding it, people going to cancer treatment. Would park at the Park Bus. The bus would take them to the hospital to do cancer treatments and then pick them up in the afternoon. They lived in Surrey County. And when you did away with that, Bernie Young was a prime example. He stopped me today. He said, there's no way I could take radiation for a whole month. People couldn't take me down there, but the Park Bus did. We were riding down the Park Bus, and people started saying, how about I get it in Davison County? How about I get it in Davie County? Our former CEO came from Europe, very big proponent of public transportation. And he found out I rode the Park Bus. Everybody in that building wanted the Park Bus in their county. He had kids going to Colorado University, and he wouldn't furnish them a car. He said, they got public transportation. You need to use it. We had public transportation here in Surrey County, but you did away with it. People going to go to cancer treatment, how they gonna park? How they gonna take that treatment? How about the nurses? All the professionals working downtown Winston, we can't stop at Sam's and get gas. We can't stop at K and W. I'm telling my age now, okay? We can't stop at K and W and get dinner for the family. We spent our money in Surrey County. And two of my neighbors moved to Surrey County and lived behind me because of the Park Bus. They work at Baptist Hospital. I wish you reconsidered this as a benefit for the county. Now, you know, I support things, Fisher Park. I've never been there, but I support it wholeheartedly. It's the right thing to do. Surrey County United Fund, twenty-six different agencies. I support them wholeheartedly, and I hope I don't ever use all of them. You know, the Greenway, I've used it once. I've been here sixty-five years, but I wholeheartedly support those endeavors. And I wish y'all would do the same. Y'all got a vision. You can make it happen. I appreciate that. Thank y'all.
On Bose, eight oh four four three two one two three three. I want to start off by saying that you serve your community. And I want to thank you for that. Because if everybody in our country served in some fashion, our community, we'd be a lot better off. So thank you for the time that you devote to what you do and the difference that you make. I just want to, I want to tell you that earnestly from my heart. And I hope I'm not breaking any kind of protocol tonight if I, if I ask you a couple of questions. The things that are also important to my heart are some of the initiatives that we had. I just want to, I just want to ask the commissioners. Has there been any effort from the commissioners to move us any closer to using a paper ballot in our future election in any way, shape, or form? I mean, it could be anything. Could be a meeting, could be phone calls, could be questioned, could be, is there, has there been any effort at all that moves us closer to getting rid of the machines, even to the point of inquiring about it? Am I out of protocol by asking you a question?
We, we don't generally respond to open forum.
A head nod? I don't know. I don't, I don't want to take that as a no, but has there been any action at all in any way, shape, or form to move us closer to preserving the data from the two thousand twenty election? I kind of see a head nod. And I appreciate that, Commissioner Marion, because you and I had a very sincere and very honest conversation a few months back, and you told me that it wasn't over. In your mind, it wasn't over. And I've held on to that. I truly have held on to that and that belief that somehow what we come up here and talk about every time, that that fight is not over in your minds. Because it's definitely not over in ours, and it's, we're not asking much. We're just asking for the commissioners to ask some smart questions. Maybe you run into some roadblocks. Maybe you decide it's not the right thing to do, but if you communicated some efforts to the people of what you're doing and what your logic is, it would make a huge difference, but there's kind of just a vacuum. So whatever inputs you're getting, let us know what they are and let us know why you're taking those inputs and taking action on them, or you're dismissing those inputs. And where do the inputs come from? It would, it would help us out a lot in understanding that you're serving up here for us and everybody. So once again, I appreciate your service. And I hope that you can, you can respect our, our request to, to calm our, calm our concerns about election fraud because North Carolina has got a ton of it. Thank you.
Keith Center, three three six seven five five seven zero zero five. First, I would like to publicly say that I've been accused many times of spewing hate at you guys. Gets back to me, things that are said, and I'm here to tell you that I'm not spewing hate at you at all. I'm asking you, demanding of you to work for we, the people. That's my only, my only agenda. I used to be really good friends with Mark. I had a relationship with Van. Me and Bill grew up together. I've spoken with Eddie many times on the phone. All of that's gone. Apparently, I've said something to offend you guys, and I'm going to apologize publicly right now. Please forgive me if I have. But the only person that has been threatened here by any of this is right here. That man threatened me initially before any election integrity stuff happened with a letter squelching my free speech. Do not come back to open forum and speak. What does that mean? You guys allowed that to happen. What was I supposed to do? Not come back? I had a conversation with Van. Van said, you coming back? I said, yeah, yeah, I'll be back up there. Because I, I, I think that's the right thing to do. Okay? Second thing is, Bill made a statement when I asked, are we going to preserve the data? You remember that, Bill? You remember? Okay. You made a very bold statement and said, that's not going to happen. We're not going to destroy the data. We have two weeks until that happens. Okay? That can happen the first week of September. You owe it to us to tell us how are you going to stop that from happening? We have presented you with a smoking gun, a hundred and seventy pieces of fraud out of four hundred and seven homes visited, and we got a pre-read statement or pre-written statement. This is not coming from hate, guys. This is coming from love of my country and what is happening in Surrey County and in North Carolina. Do you realize that? What's going on in our county schools? What's going on in our election process? We done nothing about two thousand twenty. What happened in twenty, in, in our primary this past time? We had fraudulent Virginia voters that we brought to the attention of Surrey County Board of Elections, and we were told, read a statement from a lawyer, from an Obama-appointed judge that said, you cannot challenge anybody's address from where they vote from. So that means it don't matter where you live in the United States. You can come to Surrey County and vote. Did that happen? Sure it did. We got Colorado voting here. We got Tennessee voting here. We got Virginia voting here, and we can prove it, guys. I wouldn't get up here and say, we have affidavits if we don't have affidavits. We left three with the DA of Surrey County from the Virginia voters. He said, I will prosecute them to the fullest extent of the law. Has anything been done? I don't know. I don't know. Nobody will say. We can't communicate because somebody told you guys you couldn't talk to me, to us about this. Now, originally, I was told by Commissioner Marion, or I think you said it in open forum when we were at our candidate forum. You remember saying that we had a, some type of agreement where you couldn't speak about it? And then Bill got up and said, oh, no, as long as we separate it from our job to our candidacy, we can. So I'm asking you just communicate with us, and I'm asking you to forgive me if I've offended you in any way. I'm doing it for the love of my country and my county. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Peggy Bose. Phone number is eight zero four eight one four eight seven three eight. We are just fighting flesh and blood here, and this fight has been going on for a while. All these topics have been brought up with the election. And St. Paul tells us that our, our battle is not with flesh and blood, but with principalities and powers. So we're taking this to the air. We're taking it to God because the eagle fights the serpent in the air, where the serpent has no balance and can be defeated easily by the eagle. So we're taking our prayers to God, and we're asking for Surrey County to repent. And we have offended God. We are not upholding God's law, and we are not doing God's will. And so I humbly ask you all to please pray and to do the will of our Father in heaven. And I'm going to read something from Two Chronicles, seven fourteen. If my people who are called by my name humble themselves and pray and seek my face and turn from their wicked ways, then I will hear from heaven and will forgive their sin and will heal their land. Jesus in the book of the Gospel of Matthew says, you cannot serve two masters. You will either hate one, love one, and despise the other. So we need to decide what master we're going to serve. Are we going to serve the God above? Are we going to serve the prince of lies and prince of darkness? And all I say is Jesus has been offended. This is his face that has been spit upon. It has been covered in blood. It's been covered in tears. And he is very And he is very sad, Mr. County. So I ask humbly for your prayers and for your repentance. Lord, let your enemies be scattered and let them that hate you flee before my face.
Tessa Saly, nine, one, nine, nine, zero, six, three, one, nine, four. And I love my country as well. We the people pay your salary, we purchase the machines, we pay the board of election salaries and we want action. We want to hear from you. Do you know that we were outside just a little while ago, walking around this courthouse seven times? As Joshua did with the walls of Jericho? And we went and we prayed and I was praying. And as I was praying, I wasn't praying because I hate you, I was praying for you, for the will of God to be done in you. Because right now you are bringing a curse on our land. Right now, what I, what I see from you and when I'm praying down from you is arrogance and pride. We're calling out to you as our elected officials, we elected you. And we're calling out to you to give us an answer. You, you have broken one of my constitutional rights. Where is the June sixth meeting where I stood up and spoke along with many others? Where is that meeting? Why was it taken down? I don't know if you took it down or who took it down, but where did it go? And why is it not there? If I just gave you my telephone number, I, I have public record, you can contact me, I would love to talk with you. That's all I'm asking is just for an answer. I am an American citizen that deserves an answer. I'm not a threat to democracy, I'm a threat to lunacy. And you're agreeing with doctrines of demons. That's what you're coming into agreement with. And you are calling down curses on this land. So when we were out here praying, I was praying for you when I was out here, among other things. But I was praying for you, five, there's five of you, is the biblical number of grace. I was praying that God would have grace on you. That he would reveal to you his plan and that you would follow it through. So that we, the people can receive the blessings of the Lord. If you read the word, it says that the land is cursed when the leaders don't come into agreement with what the word of the Lord is. We're calling out to you, why are you not answering us? It seems arrogant and prideful, and maybe that's not what you're being, but it seems that way. When you don't come to us with an answer. So I read this to you Ezekiel thirty-six, twenty-six. This is what I was praying for you, that the Lord will give you a new heart, that he'll put a new spirit inside of you, that he'll take the stony heart out of your flesh. That he'll give you a heart of flesh. That he will put his spirit inside of you and cause you to live by his laws and respect his rulings. And that you will obey the word of God. I'm Tessa Saly, an American city, an American citizen and a proud citizen of Surrey County. May God bring his blessings onto this land through you.
Anyone else?
The Doom and Gloom guy. So Alan Bagshaw, three, three, six, nine, oh, nine, zero, one, nine, two. Just going to read the numbers to you and then I have a couple of suggestions actually to how to take these numbers and put them into action, basically. So these numbers are for June, the July numbers are not tabulated yet. So for myself, animal control has gotten me the information. So the cat numbers are going to be first. Again, this is June twenty, twenty-two. There were two hundred and seventy cats surrendered in, to the shelter during that entire month. Two hundred and twenty-nine of those died. Twenty-one were adopted, nine were at the shelter at the time and eleven were rescued. That's an eighty-four percent euthanasia rate for cats, just so you know, if you're a cat in Surrey County, you're dead pretty much. For dogs, there were eighty-six that were intaked, twenty-one of those were, were killed. Nine were adopted, ten were in services at the end of July, or excuse me, at the end of June. Four were in foster home, nine were returned to owner, thirty-three were rescued. June was not a kind month for the, to animals in Surrey County. So ways you can make this change, you know, you may have, there was a social media post that was posted recently about. An animal that was in a kennel that had moldy and algae-filled bucket. The cement pad that he was on was covered in feces. According to the current ordinances of Surrey County, this is acceptable. And I'm going to tell you right now that it was absolutely unacceptable. It was very publicly known, made known, there were multiple visits to it. The animal control's hands are tied because again, the ordinances of Surrey County right now are allowed this kind of stuff. They're not allowed to go on to the premises to be able to investigate. So this kennel happened to be behind the house or towards the back of the property. So although animal control can see it, they can do absolutely nothing about it whatsoever. Even with the information that's provided to them. So do not blame animal control in this situation. This falls on the ordinances of Surrey County. So how to change the mentality of how citizens perceive health? They can look at a bucket, a white bucket and see green algae in it and know that, hey, that's not something that my dog needs to drink out of. That's one change that could specifically be put into an ordinance. So another one can be changing some of the, the size of the kennel, basically what's allowed to be. In versus what they're not allowed to be in. You can be more specific about what is sick and diseased. A lot of the wording right now is ambiguous. I do have some suggestions and I know I'm almost out of time and I want to respect the three-minute rule. So I do have suggestions that I can email or I can actually just hand to you if you would like to have these. These are our other counties' ordinances that do have more specific language that would be helpful. And these have been identified by animal control individuals as well as something that could be changed for.
Good evening. As you all know, our finance officer, Rhonda Nixon's going to be retiring at the end of this month. And I'd like to introduce to you our new finance officer as of September first, Laura Neely. Laura came to us from town of Dobson where she was town manager and prior to that, she was their finance officer. So very happy to welcome her.
And thank you all, I have been welcomed here with open arms and I appreciate that. I'm very impressed with the finance department and all the employees in it so far. This three weeks, I've learned a lot and they just work like a well-oiled machine. So I'm very highly impressed and thank you for this opportunity.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Gail Norman. Three, three, six, seven, eight, nine, two, eight, eight, seven. We'll make it real short and brief. I just want to say that I see a different countenance on your faces tonight. You are not looking down when we talk. You are giving us respect with your eyes and I'm just hoping that's going to really, that really means something. Just want to appreciate that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Time I close the public forum? And we'll call Marty Needham, Development of Service, Services Director for a public hearing on rezoning case. ZZR twelve, twenty-three, DQA Healthcare.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is a case number ZCR one, two, two, three. It's a general rezoning, the applicant is PQA Healthcare, Khalil Nassar is the CEO. Our proposal is to reclassify thirty-five point seven-five acres for highway business to allow for commercial use on the property. Current zoning is RA. Proposed zoning is HB. Properties in an open area of medium to high-density development with road fronters on Edgewood Drive and Park Drive. Case was presented to the planning board on Monday, August eighth. Planning board approved the request, all the members were present and the vote was unanimous.
At this time, we'll close our regular meeting and open a public hearing on rezoning case CC, ZCR twelve, twenty-three. Anyone wishing to speak on that matter may come forward.
How y'all fellows doing? Most of y'all know who I am, I own the ultimate owner right beside this property. My name is Bobby Kohler, my phone number is three, three, six, seven, one, zero, eight, three, four, six. The property that he's looking to rezone, I don't know if most of you's done your research on him, but he does. The, where you go in and get your narcotics consecutively. If you go to Dr. Deelp, he actually moved out of his facility because this gentleman is renting his facility beside him. And had been raided multiple times and it's just become a drug hazard and unsafe environment. If you do your background on this individual, that's what he's going to put there. And it's been told to me from the person that's involved in the sale. Don't mind a bit of anybody putting commercial in there because I'm awful growth in this town and we need it. The next concern I've got is Mark Golden couldn't come tonight and he actually spoke with me, he's getting washed away and so am I. We've put the apartments in, we've put the, you know, you got Walmart there and then you got the little GameStop thing there. The erosion control was unstoppable. If you'll take a drone and go over this piece of property, there's a hole back there from Walmart's water runoff hole. It's big enough to put Walmart in at the current moment. So I don't, I ain't sure how he's going to fill this in, because I've actually had engineers look at it, because we was looking at purchasing it. And we backed ourselves out just because of the maintenance of it. He was in the last meeting and I didn't get to come through talking about a Home Depot, I'm sorry, there's not enough traffic count, Home Depot's not going in there. And there ain't going to be no Hilton in there, I'm sorry, it's just not going to fit, it's not going to work. You know, I would like y'all to take consideration before you did vote it through to make sure he could answer these questions of his moving forward. The, the people that live beside me, he's been living there for fifty years. The traffic count's astronomical on Park Drive already due to the, the air at Rock and it's still growing and, and actually the industrial area right there growing. He's wanting to put an entrance him beside my shop, which is, which is a hundred percent fine, I'm okay with it. But before we go to these steps, we'd like to have a, a resolution for these other problems. And that's for me and Mark both. He's actually having to have us go down and help dredge his creek line because it's filling up, starting to take over field. Because there's so much silk coming down through there. So before we put a whole lot more of industrial in there, I think we need to kind of make sure which way we're going and what his plans is and a site plan of the property. I think it's courteous enough for me and Mark and the rest of the neighbors down through there, because they're all getting it. I know it has nothing to do with making it commercial, but I think before we go that much further, I'd like for y'all to look into trying to address some of them problems.
Dale Falk, three, three, six, nine, seven, oh, eighteen, sixty-six. Khalil Nassar, I work for him, I'm, I'm his real estate agent. He come to me, he was interested in this property. This property is the way it's located, it's located off Edgewood Drive, it's located off Park Drive. He has no immediate other plans other than to buy it and look for the future. He wants to zone it commercial. It's in an area that needs to be zoned commercial just for his. I don't like the inference that, you know, on the drugs and everything, he's, he's well vested in Dobson and Statesville. He does have offices throughout the area and he, he does a, a good job. But like I said, this property where it's located, it has uses. I know that it, the terrain is somewhat, but for him to move forward, he needs it zoned commercial. I think it needs to be zoned commercial. And, and that's the only reason I'm here, Alex expected to be just, you know, since they voted unanimously at the zoning meeting, just kind of, you know, go move forward. But I know you've got a lot to consider, but that property does have some value and some vision with some vision. It could be a lot be done with that property. And I hope you've looked at on the map, I don't have any information in front of me. I came here basically just to see the meeting and kind of tell you that he does a good job, whatever he does. Okay? Thank you.
Anyone else? You got any questions?
I have a question. Bobby, could you come back up? Your, your concern, you said something about the individual. But then you said your biggest concern would be some research needs to be done before. Was to go in there. And so what I've heard, or we have heard is that the, the, it would like to be purchased, but there's been no plans made.
Correct.
Are you ejected, are you negative to that?
I, I don't mind any purchases a hundred percent, but for me, a pain management center in a county that's already overfilled with the problems we have, which most of y'all know. Not the proper thing to put in there, I'm okay with putting something in there, it just makes my property worth more. But I think before we go into that step, we need to make sure we got the right steps addressed before somebody just wants to buy thirty acres. And want to stick a Home Depot in there that ain't never going to make it when his, his profession is, he does buy land in development a hundred percent, I do too. I've got land from South Carolina to Tennessee to here to.
I'm surprised you didn't want it.
I did, but. The, the erosion plan was going to cost me about nine hundred thousand to put an erosion plan in there. To keep Mark from getting the silk. That, that's what we had the engineer draw up to make it right. And like I say, you can take a drone, I meant to get it, but I had a truck and trailer turn over in Statesville, so I left it and come straight here. I was going to bring you pictures of it, there is a, literally a hole, she could turn Walmart sideways and sit it in. And that's how bad the erosion is on this property. And then like I say, Mark Golden, if he could have come tonight, asked what his plan was to come, it's just continuously filled in with silk.
Is that erosion attributable to the Walmart location?
From Walmart and apartment complex, apartment complex dumps its water off the backside of that bank that we've just put in right on the backside of us. So it just dumps its water off and free flows the riffraff into the bank that's already over saturated.
Well, you know, always dinner and, and land and water quality, I mean, they're the ones that, you know, have purview over tremendous erosion sites like that that you're talking about.
Karen Hall is her name, I know her very well, I work under tremendously with environmental stuff. It's just I'm not wanting to call in on somebody, it ain't none of my business. I, I, I'm wanting people to stay to myself in my area and try to mind my business the best of my abilities, it seems to work for me, so. I, I would just like for, you know, I was just asking is, before we, we jump into something that we don't know what's going there, we kind of have a site plan. I mean, I, you know, I'm, I'm over buying this little mittens building in town. And we're going to outfit it and make it a historical property and clean it up and doing some other stuff over there. But I'm getting a third degree on a roofing permit. And we've got an erosion plan over here that's astronomical and nobody's even considered before we put something in our commercial.
I, I think Bobby gave me his answer, I was concerned about how he feels about, but I think Dale was wrong. I think that's, the, the request is highway business instead of, instead of commercial or, you know, whatever's a highway business. And Bobby, my understanding, we have a list here, there's probably at least a couple of hundred different things they could put in there under highway business.
I, I agree to a hundred percent, I'm, I'm not disagreeing on that, but like, like I was in, there was someone that I was informed with that's in his firm over there that. Is one hundred percent sole purpose, but a pain management clinic center in. He can't get out of the Deelp contract for seven years. Adam Deelp, if any of y'all know him, ask him about it. You know, you probably asked officers back there, they probably helped raid it a couple of times. You know, and then like I say, in a town that's overpopulated with this stuff already, I don't feel like we should keep dumping it on there. You know, if we can prevent it, but you know, the main concern is the erosion. You know, on top of it, we get a man that's going to buy a piece of property, don't have no clue what he's getting into on his erosion before we jump to conclusions. You know, let's find out how he's going to address that, does he know what it's going to cost to fix it and what he's going to put in there? You know, you've got the, the low-income housing right there and the apartments, there's nothing wrong with it, but it's full of it. I go up there on a daily basis and tow in pound cars. So I, I kind of know what's in there and I deal with it if that makes sense. So I think it's just going to add to the equation when you put that in there, plus, you know, you do erosion and other issues. I mean, don't get me wrong, you can make a great. don't get me wrong, get make a great, another apartment complex. If you was in here saying we're gonna put an apartment complex in there, go for it. I'm a hundred percent on board. You know, go in there and clean it up. You get the erosion problem fixed. I, I don't see any issue. I just don't think it would support, you know, putting in something like a Home Depot or anything like that, especially with the traffic counter there. It's, it's minimal other than dump trucks.
Thank you, Bobby.
Thank y'all.
Dale, I have a question for you. Don't mind. Tell me a little bit more about the proposed buyer. I mean, you said he's, what was his name?
Khalil Nassar. Khalil Nassar, he has an office in Dobson. He recently has purchased the drugstore here off of Atkins Street. He has investments in Statesville and then Stokes County and King. He does, I guess the best way to describe his business, you know, physical therapy for the body. He's physical therapy for the mind. You know, he has a lot of people. He works with social services. He works with the government and some of their Medicare. So he does a lot. He does a lot. I've had no, nothing but good arrangement with him and things that I've worked with him and buying. So I don't have anything negative to say about Khalil. The reason he's interested in this property and he, like I said, he hasn't done anything with the Dobson drugstore across from McDonald's. But he's, you know, he's got plans, you know, he's got vision down the road for that. Like I said, he has offices in different areas. I think he's, his staff is about a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty people. He oversees in different areas. So in saying that, my relationship with him is a realtor broker. You know, I help him locate and find properties. I have worked with him like on two or three other successful ventures. He has no interest in this property other than he liked to have the vision for some commercial. He talked at the other meeting last Monday. There's, and he will look at apartments. He'll look at whatever, but he thinks that that property will, as, as the amount it expands and does different things, he thinks that's a good property. Good property, good location where it's located.
Thank you, Dale.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Close the public hearing and open the regular meeting back up. Do I have a motion? On rezoning case ZCR twelve, twenty-three? Motion for statement of consistency. Motion for statement of consistency. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 And the ayes have it. Do I have a motion on rezoning case ZCR twelve, twenty-three?
I'd like to ask Mr. Nadeem a question. On this, what is it, thirty, thirty-five acres? And the discussion that was held in public hearing concerning some concerns with neighboring property about erosion and the cost and preparation on the site, site prep, plan. Do you have any of those concerns as planner? Do you feel like there's any spot on there that could be shovel ready to just move in and do what would be a general preparation for us, for a building site and parking lot and the footing? Do you feel like it's, it's such a hole and such a runoff of water from surrounding parking lots at Walmart and the apartment complex that there would have to be a lot of dirt moved or is it an environmental, is it possibly an environmental issue that someone would run into? I mean, if it was a five acre lot and he's ready to build, that's one thing, but you know, it is an interesting point. I haven't seen it. I've seen the map here, but it doesn't, it's not a topographical map. I can't see the elevation. I can't see the hole. I can't see the runoff. It's an interesting discussion we've had.
Or is that immaterial to our consideration tonight?
Exactly. Or do, do we, do, do you have a concern with that or do we need to?
Well, I haven't walked the property myself, so I haven't been back there and seen what Mr. Kohler's talking about, but as with any property that's developed, you're gonna have plans. You know, site plans, there's gonna be erosion control plan. So whoever develops, whatever they decide to put on there, they're gonna be forced to do it in a way to take care of all those problems, I feel like. And whether they do it the right way, I don't know. But I think for this particular meeting, it's just about getting the property rezoned to a commercial use and whatever. I mean, if he goes in there and puts apartments, I'm sure there's gonna be a lot of dirt had to be moved. There'll be a sediment control, erosion control plan and whatever that costs will be the responsibility of the developer.
Yeah. What if a person just wanted to put up a one building encompassing just, you know, two thousand square foot building, a half acre parking lot? Is there a substant, is there a place there in that described area that we've heard talked about tonight to support that?
I would assume in thirty-five acres, there's a place to put something like that. But regardless, they're gonna have to have a set of plans, commercial, site plan. They'll have to go through the planning department, the permitting department, be reviewed by the inspectors.
And depending on the, the project, they would have to go through land and water quality for the site plan for, yeah.
You're really looking at highest and best use of this property where it's located at this point. Just in the conditional rezoning, so those things don't come into play. It's a straight general use rezoning, so. Is this highest of best use commercial in the board's opinion or isn't it? That's really the matter of the week's night.
Yeah. And so right now it's zoned rural agriculture just because it's, it's always, since the zoning became, that's that's what a lot of land was dumped in if it wasn't developed commercially or something.
Correct.
Marty, how many came to the planning board?
Just one, one person. I think it was an adjacent property owner.
Adjacent property owner?
She had concern about the entrance, what I remember. She didn't think they had enough room for the entrance. But they have two.
Two entrances.
There's two spots. One of those spots is actually also the entrance to Walmart. So they would be coming off of that if they, if they chose that one.
This property is where the entrance to Walmart is located. So that's an easement into the Walmart property.
Correct.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to defer to the commissioners from Mount Airy since I live on the other side of the county. Understand the county manager's comments about highest and best use and a general rezoning. But I'm also of the opinion this board has broad latitude in some regards into what we rezone. Or that's been my take over the years. I know we have statements of consistency and we have to be consistent. But I will defer to the commissioners from Mount Airy on this one.
Mr. Chairman, I, I've heard, I appreciate those speaking in behalf of their concerns. I'll, I'll go ahead and make that motion that we rezone from agricultural to rural, rural highway business. I'll make that motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Johnson. Do I have a second? I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Chris Knopf County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item is consideration of the lease renewal request, which has been reviewed by the property committee for the magistrate's office, which is located just across the street here from this facility. As you know, the long-term goal will be to move the new, the magistrate's office into the new jail facility. The completely estimated completion date for that project is July of next year. This lease is expiring at the end of September. Following a review by the property committee, it was agreed that this should be, we should exercise the one-year renewal and that will give us a few months of overlap in case the jail project is later than what is expected. One other item, the, the lease rate will remain the same. It's one thousand dollars per month.
Do I have a motion?
Hopefully we won't need it that full year, but I'll make the motion to re-up the magistrate's.
Motion by Commissioner Marion. Do I have a second? I'll second. That by Commissioner Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Next item is an update of the legislative goals that the board started discussing in July. I have added the sales tax flexibility statement that we have used the last couple of years. There's also a homestead exclusion relief reform, which was submitted by the tax office. There is a third item I'm expecting from Mark Willis. I don't have that yet. That's number three. And then of course too, that we've had on there the last few years about the interstate upgrades necessary on fifty-two between the Mount Airy Airport and Rural Hall. That being a priority now that the Beltway around Winston-Salem is close to completion. And of course, changes in the way the Division of Aviation funds new hangars at public airports. This is where I am currently. I haven't received anything additional. We will need to approve the list, whatever it may be, at the next meeting. So if you, I will get the third item, which is incomplete. If you have anything else you'd like for me to add, just get that to me between now and the cutoff, which will be the Tuesday before the meeting.
Chris, the, now these legislative goals are the ones that we will send to the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. Is that correct?
Yes, and I also sent them to our delegation.
Okay. You know, I have a lot of legislative goals, but, you know, and obviously I, I'd like to see them adopted by the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, but I know that's not gonna happen. One is the Parents' Bill of Rights. And the other one is the bill that the governor has already vetoed in regards to CRT. Senator Ballard put out a press release on that. One of them is House Bill three eighty-four, I think. The other one is House Bill seven fifty-five. And, you know, I think they're very important pieces of legislation, but I know they'll go nowhere in, at the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. And, you know, folks often ask why this board does resolutions. Well, I think resolutions are very important because number one, they reflect the opinion of this board, who is representative of the citizens of this county. And, and I think that sends a, a great message to our legislators and the governor as well on particular pieces of legislation. And the, these are issues that are really being talked about a great deal nationally and they affect the parents and the citizens here in the county. So I may come forward with some resolutions on those separate pieces of legislation and, cause I, you know, this is probably not the place for, you know, the one that's near and dear to my heart has always been, as Commissioner Johnson knows, the sales tax, the additional quarter cent sales tax for a voter referendum here in Surrey County, because I think that, as, as we've often said, gives us another tool to avoid raising property taxes in the event that, that the county needs to and the voters have a say on it because it's a, it's a referendum. But anyway, I may bring those up at some point in time. Thank you.
Question. Are these in priority of order as you have them listed or not necessarily so? For example, is sales tax flexibility, you think, your highest priority or would you just say all five have equal priority as a wish list?
Well, I just have them numbered as a, as a place them in the resolution. I don't usually use that numbering sequence as a prioritization. Matter of fact, when you all adopt the S, I don't really send a paper copy of the S, have to go into a web portal and I just input them individually. So there is no hierarchy once I put them into that portal. But I think, you know, if you're gonna send this to the local delegation too, it probably is important to have them in your order of priority. But to your initial question, I think each year we've done this, I think sales tax flexibility's been number one.
And I was gonna say, that's probably my number one as well. That's the reason I asked about the order. The US Highway fifty-two interstate upgrades, which I serve on the RPO at the Northwest Piedmont Council of Government, we talk about, as you well know, you're on the tax organization as well. But, you know, it's, it's our, that's the way the DOT works. We have representatives from every division that speaks of their priorities on some of these interstate upgrades and highway projects. And that certainly is one of ours here to see that we get a quicker and expanded US fifty-two interstate to, with exits that's safe and proper to get trucks on and off. And not only the King exit, but the Pilot Mountain exit and all the way up to the Mount Airy and all the exits in between. So, so that's a high priority as well in, in the area that, one of the areas that I serve on as a committee and that is with, with the tri regional council. So that's only a question. We have aircraft hangar funding on here. That's also, I think, big. I think we all know that all of these are very important. So I guess at some point, when you get them all in the list, we'll get to weigh in again on what our priorities are in order, so as when we help make the case everywhere and anywhere we can, we will, we will know what to prioritize.
Yes, I'll, the final list I'll get to at the next meeting and we'll have to take action.
Okay.
At that meeting.
Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I comment? The, one of the other things I think we've had on here in previous years is public school construction. Didn't we have that on here a number of years?
We did, and the General Assembly responded with that needs base program.
Right.
For their response to it. And of course, Mount Airy benefited from that, but I think the county system.
I'd like to see them do more of that.
Okay.
If you, you know, have a thirty-five million dollar school project and our match, our match, we can afford to pay the match, not have to borrow thirty-five million dollars, that would be great.
You're saying expand that program as far as the amount of money dedicated?
Three hundred and ninety-five million this time. And we got one point seven million in Surrey County. Be nice to capture a little, a little bit of that for.
And in a lot of respects, I think it's better than a statewide bond referendum. Because it tar, it lets you target, you know, in a better way, specific places that need funding more than others. But, you know, the, the legislature did the Connect North Carolina referendum, which passed statewide, which really saved this county. Well, we got seven point two million dollars, I think, for Surrey Community College that the taxpayers of this county would had to have spent. And, and would had to come out of the county coffers on that Connect North Carolina bond for the community college construction. And which got all of our facilities and the HVAC systems that went back to nineteen sixties, all those things that allowed us to really put them in, in, in top notch shape. And I give the legislature great credit for that because they have been physically responsible for, responsible for managing the, the state of North Carolina's tax dollars. Because when, it's not been many years ago, we owed the federal government out of the last recession. When I came on this board, we owed the state of North Carolina and the federal government like three billion dollars, three or four billion dollars. And all of that was paid back. So now that, you know, that there has been some proper management of state resources, I'm glad to see the state doing some of these things. I think it's really helped, helped out and I applaud the state legislature for that.
Okay. Next item is the request from the Board of Health. Mr. Jerry Sawyer serves as one of the public members. His term will expire in August. Samantha Ainge, the health director, and Eddie Jordan, the chair of the Board of Health, recommend his reappointment and he is willing to serve a second term.
Jerry's a, Jerry's a good member of the Health Board, gentlemen. I'll go ahead and make that motion that he be reappointed for another term.
I have a motion by Commissioner Johnson. Do I have a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman. I served on that Health Board for nine years and when you can find somebody that'll take an interest and show up for all the meetings, we just, all we can say is thank you and we appreciate his service and glad to appoint him again.
Have a second by Commissioner Tucker. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I need the board to, or I need to request that the board amend my agenda to include two items. One is a updated contract.
One is a updated contract and agreement with South Surrey Volunteer Fire Department, and the other is an Invest in Surrey update.
A motion to amend County Managers', County Managers'.
Motion to amend.
Motion by Commissioner Marion, do I have a second? I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Ed, do you want to just review the, the subtle change, I guess, to South Surrey's agreement?
I guess, last year about this time, last year about this time, the South Surrey Volunteer Fire Department had picked up rescue services, light rescue services. And in order to qualify for a grant, contract with the county needed to identify light rescue services as part of their function. And this amendment is almost identical to what we did last year. And it also stems from grant funding thereafter.
Did we do this at Westfield?
Yes.
And it's time sensitive, they need to get this placed tonight, so that they can apply for the funding.
You looking for a resolution, Mr. Chairman?
More motion.
Yeah, I'm sorry, a motion, since South Surrey's in my district, Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tucker, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Also placed an updated spreadsheet at each of your spots, and again, I apologize for the small print. We'll try to work on that between now and the next meeting, but there are a few changes here that we picked up from the last meeting. Since then, I have a couple of more changes, I just want to point those out. First is at Camp Creek, that had $300,000 and has since been zeroed out. The reason is, believe it or not, last fiscal year, there actually were two actions taken on it. One initially before the Invest in Surrey program started, and that was a general fund amendment. And so it ended up that that additional overage was covered in the general fund last year, so the Invest in Surrey funds are not needed for that project overage. So I zeroed that out. The other change is that, under Public Recreation, as you all already know, Mountain Park, Dobson, and Shoals are installing lighting with their funding. And we have accommodated them with additional funding as needed to accomplish these projects. Beulah, or Cedar Ridge, as it may also be known, has decided to move forward in a similar fashion, so we've had to adjust their amount to 165 up from what it was previously. Some of that, of course, was accommodated in the change from Camp Creek, but if you look at the bottom, at the very bottom in the middle there, the remainder now is up to 239,000. The other change is what's in red type under infrastructure, and that was something that was mentioned last meeting, the board didn't take any action, but I just put it there for future discussion about the animal shelter. So those are the changes that have occurred since, that I have made since the last approval by the board, which was at the last meeting. So I wanted to make you aware of those. It would probably be wise for the board, once we, if there's any other changes you want to make, we can talk about those. Otherwise, probably need to approve this newest version. I'd like to get back to the Beulah group tomorrow, so they can start to move forward, if you're agreeable. And the change to Camp Creek, and of course, any other changes that you may want to make.
When will we have an opportunity to do that?
You can do it right now, if you like. I plan on starting to bring this back every meeting, since things are starting to ebb and flow, we've got a lot of projects that have started. We've got the nonprofit grants, those first round checks go out this month, so a lot of things are in motion. And so I think, you know, I think each meeting, we may want to look at the S as, as actual costs come in and savings are realized, and a few places where we want to move those dollars to. I think that would be wise.
So are you saying we need to approve what you got in front of us, what's, has been, or just the change or two?
I think you need to improve, every, anytime there's a change that, that, that I've suggested, I think the board needs to approve it going forward. You know, we had some big gaps, and I'd say from last November to the spring, because things, a lot of these projects hadn't started. You make, you made, you made an approval, and we started working with those groups, as they got real calls, we had to come back and make some adjustments. So the only two adjustments, following what you approved last month, are the Camp Creek being zeroed out, and the additional funds for Beulah, which are in line with the other groups' cost estimates on lighting for their various fields. And each youth foundation, if that's what you want to refer to them as, they have different needs for lighting, some have bigger areas to light, some have smaller, and that's where you get the difference in the cost. But at the end of the day, they're all making improvements in their outdoor lighting. White Plains is making improvements to their property, but primarily, I think, internal to the building and, and so, but everyone else seems to be interested in the lighting.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
I've, I've been speaking with Matt Swift from Cedar Ridge, and he wants to go kind of in line with what we're doing at Mountain Park and Dobson. And he got a, got the quote, and it was like 165, so I spoke with Chris over the weekend, and hope, was hoping that we could accommodate them. They're wanting to light two different ball fields, so I guess that was the extra cost. But didn't want to leave them out, so.
I guess word got around the county, didn't it?
Yes, word got around.
Word got around.
I'll, I'll say that out of the Shoals allocation here, where, you know, the county does have a park on, there is a south end of the county, and that's, we got an 80 acre park down there, and owned it for many, many years. But they elected to keep the poles, the existing posts, rather than to have the metal towers and go through the, they tried to do it as with quality lights, LED lights, as cheap as it could. Once this money was allocated several weeks ago, they had some other needs, and they've got, you know, they've got a recreation committee that, a good part of them is interested in extending the walking track for the community, any, any citizen in the county, which is paving is quite expensive. So they've amongst themselves juggled the, some of their appropriation, which was for the rural recreation that we received from the federal government, to be able to dispense only for rural recreation in this particular area. And to make a long story short, they have elected to do it, and they thought they were going to be able to maybe do it for $35,000, but they've got on these lights. And I've been down there several days with the, with the guy kind of watching and overseeing it, and we have contracted with a local electrical company. He thought he could do it for 30, he, he asked, to make a long story short, 35,000 didn't quite get us there, but we have completed that job with nice LED light additions with new cross members, and about 15 lights on each existing pole, and it lights it up like a Christmas tree. They've already got seven teams to play softball this fall, we've got a couple of ladies teams, we have opened back up the hot dog stand, and we're getting a lot of attention down there. What I'm going to ask this board, I guess if, if now's the appropriate time, we missed that 35,000 by $1,600 or something, it's 36 something, I don't remember exactly what it was, didn't realize we were going to review that tonight. But since we have come a little bit, have seen some savings on some of these other projects, and since we have been fairly judicious to spread these out all across the county, I would be willing to ask the board, since we took the short and the easiest and the cheapest route, would you be willing to fudge just a little bit on that 35,000 to 36,000 and some odd dollars, when I bring the bill to forward here in the next few days? The, the project is complete.
Commissioner?
What?
How would you say, $1100?
It's, it's 36,000 and something.
Commissioner Tucker?
Yes.
You, you keep saying 35,000, I see here 135.
Yeah, the, that was, that was allotted to Shoals to do whatever they wanted to do with the recreation facility, including track and door lights, and they made the decision. But since they didn't have enough money, if you notice that figure, Mr. Johnson, we're, we're way down at the bottom of the token on some of these other projects, that we, we didn't ask for too much. And as far as lighting projects are going on, we, we, we've tried to find the county a bargain, and we will get our lights, the LED lights put in for 36,000 and some odd dollars.
Yeah.
And the other amount that's left is going to be a nice walking track, and in addition to crushing up our recycling center, and we're going to spend it very wisely, even though we didn't ask for too much, we're going to still be very judicious with it.
Well, our poles was rotten, we couldn't save them.
Is that the same totem pole he was just talking about? Being low on the totem pole or something? Was that the same one you put the cross arms on?
We, we saved our totem poles, and we've got a very nice addition to our lights, which were about 30 years old.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept these changes.
Even including Commissioner?
Including Commissioner Tucker's.
Can I round mine up to 30, since I can't, 36,000 something, could I round mine graciously to $37,000 in this change?
Alright, yeah, that's good. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
A motion by Commissioner Tucker, do I have a second? I mean, excuse me, by Commissioner Marion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tucker, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, the, as you well know, we had a very good meeting with the Surrey County Sheriff's Department in regards to animal control. And, but I'm going to save that discussion till after we vote on this motion, okay?
Any, any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And ayes have it.
Thank you, yeah, we had a very good, I want to thank publicly the Surrey County Sheriff's Department, Mr. John Hawks, and the Sheriff Larry Lowe, and all the nice folks that came to that meeting, the Abraham Dobie as well. And we do have a, a line on here that says animal shelter, because we had discussed the needs at the animal shelter. And so I would like to ask the county manager, did, I know we talked about authorizing a study or looking into getting water and sewer over there to the animal shelter, and the possibility of, you know, an upgraded facility or additional space there. And I just wanted to see if that was still in the mix.
Yeah, and we're looking into the water and sewer. And then on the building, I know there was some discussion, but I don't know if we landed anywhere particular as far as the next steps.
So, so we'd be able to use that water and sewer not just for animal shelter, but for the park as well?
I believe those, well, there's water there, there's water at the park. Sewer that we.
Sewer, sewer, be able to hook the park, that would, I think that'd be a smart move as well.
The park, the shelter, Hope Valley.
Being we're on that subject matter, I appreciate these folks coming in and keeping us updated on the cats and dogs, if you want to call it that way. But I've asked them to come up, and I've heard animal shelter or humane society, I've heard these things, I've asked them to really come in with some good numbers pertaining to, you know, we need to conduct some good business with that. I, I hate that we had 270 cats, 220 of them lost their lives. Now, I don't know what that cost us per cat, but if it's somewhere reasonable, you know, that cat to be neutered, we would save all that. I'm just saying, I'd like, I'd, I'd really like to involve, was it Mayberry Paws and Tiny Tigers, or somebody that, that really has a vested interest, that's one of their great missions in life, that they be part, that they be part of a study, possibly, it can be part of a committee, or it's pertaining to what's needed, along with our sheriff's department who handles animal control.
The, we did discuss a committee.
Okay.
And, but it seemed to be the consensus of everyone in the, in the room that, you know, we, we've had an animal shelter committee over there, and of course, you have to have a vicious dog committee, and that's statutory. The, it, we did discuss that, Commissioner Johnson, and and it seemed to be the consensus of the group and the folks that run the animal shelter on a day-to-day operation, that the best approach going forward, after much discussion and a very long meeting, that communication was probably going to be best served with these folks on an individual basis, relaying their concerns to the, to the animal shelter staff. And, you know what, I guess being in county government for some time, you know, committees, sometimes they can, you know, the spring, and I guess what I'm trying to say is maybe the, the process is not as streamlined. If you have sometimes a committee on certain things, and obviously, people don't want to meet for the sake of meeting. And, and I hope that our sure, and I'm convinced that our sheriff's department will work with these folks in an expeditious manner, and hear their concerns. And after our very lengthy meeting, which was quite lively, I think that, that that will happen. And I want to commend the sheriff's department again for a very good meeting, and so I wanted to make that statement there, you know, in regards to the committee that we had previously discussed, thank you.
Well, I, I, I'm sure they would appreciate even the sheriff's department or this committee, some input from these folks I just mentioned, they just had some input. We've already voted, Mr. Chairman, on this, but I, I, I see we still have a balance, and it might consider some, some of that, or most of it going towards an animal shelter, such as, or improvements and such as those things. But I'd like to go ahead and, and ask, if y'all can remember, I spoke a fair amount about fire hydrants over at Franklin Elementary School. And I've done some homework on that, and I'll, but I just say, don't forget that. I'm going, I've, I've somewhat know about what it would be, but I'd, we wait, make sure we get another figure. And we have, well, it's not quite done yet, but I think we'll have some help on it, too. Possibly a third of the cost. So, and I asked, but I'd just like for y'all to remember, I, I feel that is of grave importance to our, the largest elementary school in Surrey County, to have those fire hydrants on their side of the road. I just, I want to put that in there, just don't forget, and we'll, we can discuss it another time.
Mr. Chairman, may I go back down to the shelter right quick? If, if, if the board is in agreement for a consensus to the county manager, would it be appropriate for the county engineer to maybe review the facility, or look at the facility, and talk to the staff over there, Mr. Hawks and, and Larry Lowe, about possible needs there going forward as we discuss these monies involving Invest in Surrey? In the event that, you know, we do, and I think we probably will have some latitude in these funds, I mean, I don't know what some of these projects are going to come in at, but in the event that, that, that we may be able to utilize some of these funds for upgrades over there.
Yeah, that's a good idea, I'd ask, you know, we asked Jessica and Marty, I think Marty's architectural background, to work on that as a team.
And we're checking, is John, there is John checking on how this is going to fall, if we were to do 20 more bays, 20 more bays, if that would fall under the old law, or is that, we're going to have to up it a little?
And get that in the mix as well, when Marty and Jessica look at options over there, and what, what the state would require if we do, you know, make some upgrades over there. Obviously, we'll want to make the plate, the place better, and then, you know, the state, you know, that, that's our goal here. We want a, a nice facility over there that, that serves everybody well.
Yeah, we can get started on that this week. That's all that I had after General County Commissioner Business, we have a request for closed session for all three items, personnel, legal, and economic development.
Alright, Jim, Mr. Marion?
Oh yeah, I had an opportunity this past Thursday to attend, along with County Manager Chris Knopf, to attend the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Annual Meeting on Friday morning. Beth Macy was the keynote speaker. Beth Macy was the keynote speaker, the author of Dopesick. She's coming out with a new book tomorrow, uh, Raising Lazarus. And she has interviewed several people from North Carolina and, I mean, from Surrey County. And she features Mark Willis, our substance abuse director, recovery director, uh, Sonya Cheek, one of our peer support specialists, uh, Wendy Odom, uh, several, several citizens out of Surrey County. And, uh, and then after her keynote speech, uh, we had a panel discussion in one of the session rooms, which consisted of, Chris was the moderator and, uh, Mark Willis, uh, Jamie Edwards, who is our data specialist, Sonya Cheek and Beth Macy was on, all on the panel. So for about an hour, hour and a half, um, the room was packed. People are wanting to know what Surrey County's doing about their opioid problem. And, uh, it was a very good discussion. A lot of people came up after it was over, wanted information, and I'm sure Mark's had several calls since then. And, uh, and then I went to another one for Cabarrus County on Saturday morning and they took about two and a half hours, but everybody kept referring to what Surrey County was doing. And, uh, it was just a, a good weekend and our substance abuse recovery program done us proud. And we're making strides, got a long way to go, but it was very touching to hear all the, uh, the questions and, and how, how we're doing things and, and, and how it's improving and, and just another question, I just wanna know if the sheriff's department's got cooled off yet. All right, thank you.
I don't have much to say, I would, once again, even though a lot of them are gone, I don't blame them. Uh, this seems like we're gonna have a long meeting after this meeting, sounds like, but, but anyway, I'd always appreciate community input and anybody's got anything to say, uh, that's the way the process works, uh, whether we make you happier or make you angry, uh, we, we can only vote yes or no, we don't vote in the middle. And, uh, some of the questions that were raised tonight, I do think, and I'll, I'm gonna defer to the chairman if he wants to answer that. We, we did have some answers for some of those, but in the common and normal decorum that we use, we, we usually respond at our time to respond and, and usually not in open form and that's certainly not meant to be arrogant or, um, prideful or conceited, but I, I got a couple of answers for some of those things or issues raised tonight, but I am gonna defer it to the chairman, I believe that'd be appropriate. Other than that, we appreciate everybody's comments on all these things, appreciate your participation in county government and, um, uh, we'll see you here in a couple of weeks or I believe we're gonna get it back on our normal meeting schedule of, I think we've had one meeting in July, one in August, but somebody called me the other, the other day, I don't even look on the, online at the schedule, but after August, I think we will have the two meetings a month again, starting in September. So with that said, thank you, appreciate it, thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you guys and appreciate your, your, uh, generosity on helping, helping us out on overshooting our lighting budget there, so thanks, sir.
Um, I'd like to, um, make note that Commissioner Johnson and I attended the ribbon cutting at, um, the Hugh Chatham, uh, Hospital's new urgent care off the C.C. Camp Road exit ramp, uh, near Elkin. And a beautiful facility, quite a large crowd there, um, and, um, I think, uh, again, we're very fortunate to have two wonderful hospitals in our area and I think it's an economic driver and economic engine and great pieces of the puzzle that makes us a great place to live, so, uh, my hats off to Hugh Chatham Hospital and all they do for our community, thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
No, I can't at this time, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to address one thing from the forum, if I may. And the reason I want to is because we also had a request today from a media representative about the same item, and that is about the, um, absence of the June sixth meeting from the county.
We're gonna talk about.
Okay.
I was gonna address that. You could, I?
I was just gonna read the email we received.
Yeah, go ahead, please do.
Currently, we are dependent on YouTube, that is the, uh, platform we use to get our meetings out. And, uh, within a few days, that meeting, it was posted, it was taken off by YouTube. Uh, for they say, um, it, um, they reviewed the content carefully and they confirmed that it violates their misinformation policy. They said they knew that was probably disappointing news, but that was their policy. We, we appealed it, they still, they denied our appeal. There's not much we can do about it at this time, we spoke with county attorney about it. But what we are doing, and I will mention, is that, uh, hopefully later this fall at the earliest, that's our hope at least, we are developing our own, um, digital platform. And the meetings, while they'll still probably be available on YouTube, will also be available on that digital platform so that we can, uh, have control over that content so that this doesn't happen again, regardless of what is said or not said, and, uh, it will remain up. So it's not only, um, something I'm sure is unsettling for people who live in the community who cannot view the meeting, but also, it's also a great resource for the staff to go back for minutes and other reasons to look at content, uh, and to follow up on. So it's unfortunate, but it's not, it, the reason it's not there is not having anything to do with the staff here. The Board of Commissioners has everything to do with YouTube's decision to take it down.
And, and I, I'm gonna jump back into this, and I was gonna, wanted to answer that question. We, we were as surprised and shocked as anybody, if, just to refresh folks' memory, we just have started videoing and audioing meetings here in the recent months because some of us, most of us, all of us felt like, you know, it's, uh, it's just an open forum and it gives the public an ability to see what we have said and it not only, they can tune in live, but it's, it's recorded in, in, in history and, uh, you can go back, these things are archived. And, uh, they're handy for some people to go back and say, well, I missed that meeting, well, they can go back. Well, we, we have learned through this that we couldn't count on YouTube to do that for us, uh, as far as archiving our meetings. So that's a meeting we don't even have left, uh, for our archives, but we are working on a new procedure on having our own recordings so as we can always have all the meetings that will be available to the public. But, yeah, I, I appreciate you reading that and, uh, and, and Mr. Chairman, you can elaborate first, thank you for letting me jump in.
And as far as we were asked about 2020 election data, I've been assured that that data will be preserved, probably from now on because of the controversial nature of that election. Uh, so I, I feel pretty confident about that. I will say in terms of, you know, um, evidence presented, we really haven't been presented a lot of evidence in terms of affidavits. You've stood up and held them up and talked about them. Uh, I asked for those, uh, before the May sixteenth meeting. Uh, I said, bring any compelling evidence, I would be glad to deliver that to the Board of Elections. Uh, that has not occurred, uh, still haven't occurred. And that, I, I'm not gonna name names and point fingers and, but, uh, um, I, I do feel like that there's been some unkind things said about us. I will say that publicly, um, for public consumption, but in terms of those affidavits, before the May sixteenth meeting, I did say, if you have that compelling evidence, I said, where is it? It's locked in a safe, I'm assuming it's still locked in a safe, uh, but if you have it, I would be glad to deliver that to the Board of Elections. But, uh, that has not been presented to us, it's been held up in front of us. The night of May sixteenth, though, you talked about percentages and none of that was ever, uh, given to us. So I will say that publicly. Uh, that's all that I have, uh, looking for a motion to go into closed session.
Tell Luke.
Second.
Uh, motion by Commissioner Harris, second by Commissioner Johnson, any discussion?
I'd like to welcome Laura again before we close.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Question by Commissioner Johnson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tucker. All in favor? Well, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.